So, welcome everybody to the special meeting of council Wednesday, March the twenty third, twenty twenty two. It's five P M. This meeting is being held by Zoom. It is not being recorded as it's principally a closed session. And I'd like to call this meeting to order at, as I say, at five P M. Any declarations of conflict of interest from anybody? Don't see any. Welcome, Councilor Shewski. So I have a motion moved by counselor pro seconded by Deputy Mayor Ross that the contents of the special media of council with close session on March twenty third, twenty twenty two be approved. Any comments or questions with respect to the agenda? Seeing none, then all those in favor? That's unanimous. There's Chair Dixon.
Okay, I'm just gonna pause the recording while we go into close and then we'll resume once we go back into open.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So for those who are just joining us, councils engaged in closed session discussions regarding legal matters. We've now closed out the closed meeting and are in open session. And I have a motion that arises from the closed session. So it's moved by Counselor Shewski, seconded by Counselor Maine, that council acknowledges and accepts the confidential update and recommendations provided by the chief administrative officer and the police services board chair at the closed meeting session of the special meeting of council held March twenty third, twenty twenty two with respect to the police service legal update. So any questions or comments about the motion? Not seeing any, then? All in favor? That's unanimous.
Yes.
Caster Downer, Jerry, you in favor? Thank you. See, I'm sorry. I just didn't see your card. So that's unanimous. Next is a motion moved by, again, by Council Downer, seconded by Counselor Oshewski, that bylaw twenty twenty two dash two one being a bylaw about the proceedings of the special media of council with closed sessions have session rather help March twenty three, twenty twenty two be passed and enacted. Comments or questions? Seeing none on favor?
Yes.
Thank you. Finally, I believe, yes, moved by Counselor Cunningham and seconded by Council Prose with the special meaning of council the closed session dated March twenty three, twenty twenty two adjourned at two thirty five fifty two P M. All those in favor?
Yes.
Thank you. Keep unnerving me when I hear you saying yes.
Sorry, I'll go get my cards.
So that's a thank you, Chair Dixon, for your
Good night.
Enjoy that daiquiri. No problem again. So we've got a result. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular council meeting for Midland six P M. Wednesday, March twenty third, twenty twenty two. This meeting is being held virtually via Zoom and is being broadcast on Rogers Cable fifty three and it will be available on YouTube for viewing subsequent to the to the actual meeting. So with us, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask if there are any declarations of conflict of interest with respect to the agenda. I don't see any. Thank you. I'd just like to acknowledge land acknowledgement. The town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land, which is the traditional and treaty territory of the Anishinaabe people now known as the Chipewa Tri-council comprised of Bozley First Nation, Rama First Nation, and the Georgina Island First Nation. This territory is within the pre-confederation treaty five and treaty sixteen and included within the Williams Treaties of nineteen twenty three. The town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land, which is the traditional territory of the Huron-Wendat and the historic homelands of the Métis, and that our town is home to a large and diverse community of indigenous peoples. And with that, I would just ask you join me in a moment of silent reflection, perhaps give some consideration to all those people being dislocated within Ukraine and, for that matter, around the world. Thank you very much. At this point, we have, I'm going to turn the meeting over to C A O Deno. There are a couple of staff announcements I think you'd like to make.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll be making one announcement tonight. And there is a retirement that was announced to staff, but we want to make sure that that person can be available and his family can be available. So we'll delay that one until until the the next council meeting is a recent retirement of one of our volunteer firefighters. So we'll postpone that until they're available. But but the one person I did want to acknowledge, and I know council is very, very anxious to do this as well, is we'd like to certainly acknowledge the tremendous work by Michael Jeremy, our CFO. So I'll just take a minute to make a few remarks about about Michael and invite him to make any any remarks he'd like to do. And I know council would like to express their appreciation. And I'm sure there's many members of the public as well, because he's done a tremendous, tremendous job for for the town since joining us not too long ago. Actually, April sixth, Michael joined us just before I joined the town. So our journey has been somewhat similar in terms of our duration in terms of how long he's been here. He's he's just a tremendous professional, I think, as as you've all been able to appreciate over over the time that he's been here, truly, truly dedicated to to the town and to his team. If you were able to certainly witness Michael on a day to day basis, you know how deeply he cares about the people that he works for. And certainly, they they certainly appreciate that that kind of support. And he's he's extremely dedicated, you know, to his profession. Michael has worked in other municipalities, large ones. He's worked internationally as a finance professional. He, you know, we're lucky to have him join the town of Midland, and that certainly paid off for us in terms of the contributions he's been able to make. We certainly have a much, much better perspective on kind of the financial situation that we have. We think we're making tremendous progress. You know, you're seeing some of that progress in tonight's council meeting. Some of the very disciplined approach we've had at the town. You've seen it in the budget process with the amount of information we've been transparently sharing. You're seeing it in the forecasting of our circumstances. The years are coming at us and how we're trying to to make sure we position ourselves to take care of those needs. So he's been absolutely critical to making sure that that has happened. So he's been, you know, he's been a tremendous, tremendous asset to the town. I will certainly miss him. For those of us who know him a little bit better, and we get to work with him on a regular basis, not only is he great professional, but he's got a really clever, clever wit. He's a, he's a very funny, funny person. He's got a terrible appreciation for seventies music, though. He really doesn't know any good seventies band. So that is one of the unfortunate things. But, you know, I think he's trying to have a better appreciation of good music. So we'll certainly encourage him to continue doing that. And the last thing I'll mention, and there's no doubt in my mind, it's the most important thing to Michael, is his family. He is just a wonderful family person, very, very supportive of his entire family, whether that's his children or his his partner. But also really cares for, you know, his his brother and his his parents and his on his white side as well. So that is, you know, certainly an important factor in in Michael considering the move out west, a very important thing for him. But I know it's with with very mixed emotion that he leaves this family. So we will certainly miss him. His contributions are lasting, and they'll last for a very long time. He's been just a tremendous asset to us. I know he'll remain available to us if we have any questions. So he'll want to keep an eye on on Midland for sure. But I just wanted to express our our appreciation to Michael and thank him for everything he's done. And through you, Your Worship, I'll ask Michael to make any comments he'd like to make.
Mr. Jeremy.
Your worship, I will, I'll keep it brief. But I did want to say that I have truly enjoyed working with the team here at the town of Midland over the last two years. And I do take comfort in the knowledge that I am leaving things in experienced, capable hands with this senior leadership team. As David mentioned, I started here about two years ago, just ahead of him, just as that pandemic was heating up. And now I hope that with my departure, we're seeing the page turn on COVID and that things can get back to some semblance of normal. It is kind of strange to think that my entire tenure here with the town has been during a been during a pandemic. There are exciting times ahead for the town of Midland, and I will be watching from the other end of the the other end of the country to see how some of these significant projects such as Middle Bay Landing progress as time goes on. And, you know, seeing the the opportunities and prospects for growth here in the town as it as it evolves and grows with time. And I just wanted to say that I do wish all of you the best for the future and we'll be seeing you around. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jeremy. And it's it's been a pleasure working with you. It's certainly the last two budgets have been quite a bit different. And we've seen a real progression as we've gone through them. The notion of having continuity documentation on reserves, the idea of multi-year planning for capital all happened under your tutelage. And so thank you for that and leaving Midland in a better place than when you founded. And I'm assuming there's no cause and effect between pandemic and your arrival and departure. And as far as the seventy music, seventies music, I'm sure we'll all forgive you for that. You know, I personally prefer sixties and eighties stuff. But hey, enjoy your time out west. It's a wonderful spot. Thank you.
Thank you. I certainly hope there's no cause of fact. And I'm working on seventies music.
There we go. Thank you very much. So we'll move along on the agenda. The approval of the agenda is moved by Counselor Downer and seconded by Counselor Cunningham. The contents of the regular council agenda for March twenty third, twenty twenty two be approved as amended with the removal of item two, sorry, twelve point one C S R twenty twenty two dash one seven, which is an entrance appeal at one oh two seven Glen Bogey Drive. Comments or questions with respect to the agenda prior to approving? Any additions or deletions? Seeing none, then all those in favor, please? That carries unanimously. Thank you. Next, we have motion moved by Counselor Shewski and seconded by Counselor Maine, that the items and related recommendations contained within the March twenty third, twenty twenty two consent agenda as consent items having been considered by council be adopted. These include minutes from previous meetings, including the second of March rate of council meeting twenty twenty two council information packages for February twenty two, twenty fifth, right through to March the seventh, eleventh of this year, reports dealing with Seventh Street reconstruction, twenty twenty year end report with surpluses and the recommendations to be moved to reserves, the remuneration and expenses paid to members of council local boards for twenty twenty one, and the downtown walkways naming contest. Ross and then Counselor Gordon.
Very much, Your Worship. I just wanted to touch on a couple of things. I appreciate the agenda today. And yes, we had a bit of reserve, which is wonderful. And I'm sorry, a bit of surplus with regards to two thousand and twenty year end. But right away, the very first item on the agenda today, five point four point one, four hundred thousand dollar increase for construction. So it couldn't have come at a better time. I'm so glad we're putting this in reserve. That would be right on the heels of our tax increase right away, four hundred thousand dollar increase. So I'm so happy that we're putting this away for a rainy day like this. And I'm sure we're gonna have a number of projects that are gonna be coming in over budget. We all know that it's never easy to set these budgets. And and the world sure has changed, even from the day that we've changed our budget, the price of gas, transportation. I could list it. Inflation has gone up even more drastically than we ever. So I can't believe the first item, five point four point one is an increase. Then the next, we sort of came into a bit of windfall. So sometimes things work out. And I definitely support putting that into into reserve. I believe we're gonna need it over this year and years to come. So thank you so much. I love the laneway renaming and looks great. And I'm sure Council Maine loves the Butter Tart Lane. So I know he was probably a strong supporter, but I think it's great. So nothing defines Midland more than the Butter Tart. Thank you.
Hey, Deputy Mayor, Counselor Gordon.
Thanks. I was happy to see the names as well. The two that were picked, I happen to be a voter and one of the registered people on that site. And those are the names I picked as well. So I added my my two cents. I do encourage people to continue to use engaging Midland and take us up on our ongoing efforts to engage. That is probably the number one complaint I get from people. And a lot of times, it's sometimes founded, other times it isn't, is engage with us using the tools that we we offer on top of just calling us and texting us and getting hold of us on social media, which brings me up to my next thing. One of our town town residents, well known to Counselor Maine and Deputy Mayor Ross, Mr. Gordon, no relation to me, well, at least none that I know of, has been an ongoing sort of vocal critic of the issues around parking on Sixth and Seventh and the congestion that that leads up to and follows the school day as kids and their parents line up to get, you know, dropped off for school or picked up. And I know, and I told him that I was one of those people for many years as my kids were in the French immersion program at MoneySpace. So where I'm going with this is the Seventh Street construction is about to change the dynamics of the traffic flow on Sixth and Seventh throughout the summer and into the fall. And that that makes it a little difficult for us to to kind of come together as a council and try and find a solution to this long nagging, ongoing situation on Sixth and Seventh. But what I'm concerned with, and I would like to know if staff could announce and have a plan on what we're gonna do to try and mitigate that increase in traffic as a result of this construction and how we're going to try and keep the kids and the residents and balance everybody's needs and happiness until we can, or I guess it'll really be next council that forms to try and deal with this ongoing issue of parking problems and and congestion on Sixth and Seventh in relation to Monday's Bay School. That was sort of my first question.
Mr. Campbell.
Through your worship to Counselor Gordon. Yes, the construction of just for the residents who aren't aware, Seventh Street, the sanitary sewers are collapsing under the road. We've got last year some significant failures in our sewers, sort of old road, old pipes. So we'll be replacing the water, storm sewers and sanitary sewer, and then putting a new sidewalk on on top and curbs and asphalt when we're done. So the project, I guess, the first scheduling point is we're working with the contractor that we will be done by Labor Day. So it will only be affecting May and June of this year. So that is our objective. And we believe the time and the quality of contract we have will will get this done before school starts in the fall. So in May and June, as we start construction, Seventh Street will be closed to traffic except for buses. We'll be allowing the buses to get in and out of that. And we will be working with the school. We've been touched with the principal. I I know I have staff are going to be working with the Parent Teacher Association to get some letters out. But it will be traffic chaos. We are asking, and the Health Department has been working with the school over the last couple of years to try and get parents to walk their kids to school. You'll see around the school, we have some new signs put up, how many minutes the walk is, some nice kid friendly pictures on those signs. But for May and May and June, we'll be encouraging as many parents and children as possible to walk. We will be looking at, you know, trying to control the traffic. The traffic will be moving over to Eighth Street. Traffic will be moving on Fifth Street. So both those streets will be seeing more congestion. But I'd like to just point out, it's typically for half an hour in the morning and a half an hour at the end of the day, maybe a little bit more at the end of the day. And just ask everyone for patience. So Counselor Gordon specifically, we'll be sending through the school notices home. Well, you know, we'll be doing the best we can with traffic management, traffic mitigation. But the best solution is hopefully we have some nice weather and people will choose to walk to school.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell, you had a second question, Counselor Gordon?
Yes, thanks. And we're just a comment on the remuneration report. I made a social post about this as well. When people, if people follow this along, will notice that I had the highest expenses for twenty twenty one thousand dollars. I don't know what our cap is. It's like fifteen hundred or eighteen hundred or something. But I did make inquiries with the clerk to make sure my recollection was correct on what those expenses were for. And they relate to the A M O conference that I attended virtually this past year, because, of course, it wasn't, again, for the second year, it was online only. And it was also for a training course on water, you know, our fiduciary duty to duty of care for our water system. And the other one was a I knew I should have written this down before I started talking about it. Oh, it was managing conflicting relationships. Yeah, it was a an interesting thing that popped up in my calendar. I had a couple of days off on vacation, time left at work. So I took that and that burned a couple hundred dollars. So just if anyone's interested, I, you know, put this on my my own social feed. But just to understand where that money goes, and I do take it seriously, and I certainly didn't exhaust my training expense. Questions were asked, well, you know, how come I did this and other counselors didn't? I cautiously steer away from that. Everyone has their own reasons for whether they engage in training, their time off work, other family circumstances, what have you. So if you do have questions, just feel free to reach out to the individual counselors. I I don't presume to speak for any of them. But I just wanted to explain where my where you where your thousand dollars went in twenty twenty one, and I put it to good use. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And the other questions or comments, Councilman?
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on the Seventh Street, AKA Monday's Bay reconstruction, and how it's gonna impact. I we've been getting complaints with residents. So we've been talking about it with staff. So I've informed the principal of the upcoming construction. He said that the school board will be working with, obviously, Mr. Campbell on some communications and trying to promote, you know, active transportation, trying to prevent traffic congestion. And I was actually doing some counting of the numbers as my kids go to that school. And it doesn't take very many cars for the whole street to fill up. And so every car counts. And, you know, twenty or thirty cars, all of a sudden, the whole street is filled up from Young all the way to Hugo. So we're trying to be very mindful and try to promote walking and things like that. And the school board is on it. And if you don't know Principal Harding, he is one of the best principals in the county. So we have full faith in their ability to manage the chaos. And I just wanted to make a quick comment. Very excited, but obviously the name is Butter Tart Lane and Wendake Way. Those are fun novelty names. Hopefully, somebody will take the change their address. So there'll be one Butter Tart Way. But I mentioned to Ms. Mealing, Karen Mealing, the manager of culture, that it doesn't really crack the threshold of our indigenous protocol. Usually, that's for higher level things of master planning, official plans, that type of thing, where we have a protocol to reach out. But perhaps just touch base with our Huron-Wendat nation, just to make sure that they're comfortable with us using the name, but which, of course, is a reflection of this is the historic Wendake lands of the people of Windat. So I just want to be extra sensitive when we're using indigenous names, because we certainly need to have more of them in town. And I think this is a great step in the right direction. Thank you.
Your Counselor. Any further questions or comments with respect to the consent items? Seeing none, then I'll call the question. All those in favor. Thank you. That carries. Next motion, moved by Counselor Downer and seconded by Counselor Gordon, the council resolved into the committee of the whole. Deputy Mayor Ross. Sorry, all those in favor? Thank you. Getting ahead of myself.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. And I would like to echo your everyone's words with regards to wishing Mr. Jeremy all the best out west. You're gonna love it, beautiful area. And we're gonna miss you here in Midland. But we wish you and your family all the best out there. Today, which quite the probably shortest agenda I've had since being the deputy mayor taking care of this committee of the whole. There's no public meetings, no presentations, no integrity commissioner report, no deputations or petitions, no local boards, nothing was withdrawn from the consent agenda. And
Muted, Deputy Mayor.
Did everyone hear everything? Or did I I hit it somehow? You didn't hear anything?
No, no, we heard. We heard you up to the point where you're just about to do notices of motion.
Oh, I'm very sorry. Wow. Okay. Well, we don't have much. I don't know how I did that. I am very sorry. Yeah, we don't have any petitions, any reports, no deputations, no local board memo, and nothing was withdrawn from the consent agenda. And our opponent, Mr. Peach, has asked to remove his item with regards to ten twenty seven Glen Bogey. So that will come at a future meeting. So next up would be my first item would be a COVID nineteen update. Mr. CEO, Mr. CEO, I apologize before we move on. Counselor Gordon, you had a question?
Yeah, sorry, just about rescheduling that appeal. Does this fact that he's asked for an extension jeopardize his appeal in any way? Do we lose jurisdiction? Or is there any type of, you know, timeframe that he's the clock is ticking down? I just don't want I want to make sure we keep jurisdiction over this.
I I believe not. But, Mr. Campbell, you want to verify, of course?
Through this is an appeal on our bylaw. This is not a planning appeal. So, you know, he's he's this is he's he's basically asked to delay it. And we've said no problem, because he's just wants to appeal a bylaw to council.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Okay, next up, we have COVID update with regards to, sorry, Mr. CEO, COVID update today?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Ross, and to the other members of council. Update on COVID. Unfortunately, we can't say there's no COVID, because it still continues to be the circulating within the community that in terms of the stats from the health unit today, eighty-five percent of individuals five plus of a first dose, eighty-two percent five plus of a second dose, and about fifty-three percent twelve plus of the booster dose. There are twenty cases in the hospital, four in the ICU. There were three deaths today and about twelve deaths in the last week, which is similar to the last time we had an update at the last council meeting. Almost two deaths a day continue to happen with COVID. So again, a terrible, terrible pandemic in terms of the havoc it reaches in in the community and on families. So that is certainly the circumstance. However, we all know that there's a lot of restrictions were lifted on Monday. You know, I think there is certainly everyone feeling that we need to somehow find a way to to live with this. The healthcare system isn't isn't nearly as impacted as in the past. So that was one of the critical factors in in certainly making that decision. And that's that's certainly what the town has done. We've we've made sure our services are being provided in conjunction with that. So most of those restrictions have lifted. Masks remain in place on public transit. I think most people know that. But that is a really important fact on our services, that you need to continue to wear masks on public transit. So that that remains in place. At the town, we updated for our town staff, we updated our our vaccination procedure. So we've made a number of changes there. Masking, like the provincial guideline, is optional. We've 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 used some some terminology that the sovereign township, I thought, was quite clever in using. It's called and it's called be kind masking. And that's to certainly be kind of people who choose to wear masks or and be kind to those people who don't. And if you have a sense that someone isn't comfortable with you without a mask, we'd encourage mirroring. So whatever that person is using, perhaps you should try and consider So whatever that person is using, perhaps you should try and consider that. So that is kind of the policy have with with masking. As has been the case throughout the pandemic, certainly the public and all our staff have been just phenomenal and in being respectful and and adhering to those policies. So I really want to thank everyone for for doing that. We all have to understand, and I think we all do, that this is a very personal decision on how people adjust to the protocols. There are many people who continue to be very concerned about COVID and they have a choice on how they want to conduct themselves. And we're trying to provide as much flexibility, certainly to our staff, so that they can work safely and serve our residents. So those were the big changes made with us. We intend to bring a report forward for council at the next meeting for council to consider with its vaccination procedure, which is very similar to what the towns was. So I think you can anticipate that we'll be recommending very similar procedure that we have now with with a lot of those elements. So we'll bring that forward for council to consider for itself and the committees and boards that are that are at the town. And we will also be testing tomorrow. We're going to be doing a test in council chambers. There's a number of upgrades that we've made to the video and audio within those chambers. We have guidance from the chief medical officer on on, you know, safe practices within council chambers. So we're going to try it out tomorrow with with a few folks, both in person and virtually, and see how that experiences and hopefully we can get council in there in whatever capacity you would like. Certainly, we want to offer the flexibility of virtual. Depending how we set up the council chambers, we'll determine how many people can potentially participate in that room. But certainly, we want to make sure we have the option as every council is considering nowadays to accommodate both virtual for public and council members as we kind of continue to move through through the pandemic. So we're we're pretty optimistic about those those upgrades that were made. We think it'll be a much, much, much better experience for everyone involved. We might be a bit, a few bumps to to get through in terms of managing technology. But even that, we understand is fairly easy. So we'll be a vet test tomorrow. So with that, I will turn it back to you, Deputy Russ, and certainly welcome any questions.
You know, any questions or comments with regards to Mr. Noah's update? Counselor Gordon?
So I was just trying to read through between the lines here. Does that mean our next council meeting in three weeks, you know, barring another resurgence of the plague means we're going to be able to meet in person? And will we get some kind of training session ahead of time? So we don't look completely ridiculous not being able to work any of this new new kit?
Mr. Dino?
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Ross. And through you to Counselor Gordon. We're hopeful, Counselor Gordon. We're tomorrow will be a big, I think, a big, a big test for us tomorrow to see how it is and how, in fact, easy it is for everyone to to adapt to this. We'll try and make sure we've got people of different technology comfort to test this thing out and you know, get a reading from that. There is, I've seen a lot of council, municipal councils announce a rather staged approach to return into the council chambers, having public come in kind of in in the later phases and stages and towards the end of April or May. We'll have to see how much space we have and how the technology works. But we're hopeful we can provide that option sooner than later.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dino. I know the worship and I had a county council meeting on yesterday, sorry, Tuesday. And before the meeting, one of the council members asked who was in who what council had moved into chambers. And if I understand correctly, there's only one in Simcoe County that has moved in, and that being Romero. Everybody else is still proceeding with caution as as we are. But they're definitely every the talk is out there. And I think, you know, as time goes on, I think we're going to see more and more moving back. But there's no talk at all of county council at this point. There's 32 members and to spread them out, the chamber wouldn't even be big enough. I think it'll be interesting to see how the others proceed. But as of today, I and I could be wrong, but I I'm pretty sure Romero is the only one. Any questions or comments with regard to the COVID update? Councilman?
No, I just saw a brief anecdote is that I was at the grocery store at Food Basics getting another rapid test, as I often do. I've seemed to be going through quite a few. I know several people this week have tested positive. So it was a very uneasy feeling on Monday when all the restrictions are lifted and you know, people who are testing positive. And the person said to me, I said, oh, don't forget to ask your test. And she said, you know what? I'm scared. And I think that that's a real feeling in our population, especially our senior population. So be kind masking is a great way of looking at it and trying to still be very respectful and considerate, especially of our elders who are at a much greater risk. So that's why it was a bit surprising that all the mask mandates were lifted in some areas. Rec Center and Ask Anonia Center, maybe that would have been advised to have masking there or even the library. But transit, I think that's a great provision. So again, and people are, as you as you've said, people are unmasking when comfortable and are masking if they're not comfortable. So we exit a new period. It's not the old normal. It's, as I've heard, the next normal. So, you know, best of luck to everyone out there. Stay safe and get those rapid tests. They are very handy and convenient. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Man. Any other questions or comments? I see none. We'll move on to the next item, which would notice a motion. Any notice of motion from council this evening? I see none. General announcements, any announcements from council? Counselor Downer?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'd just like to announce that I live at the corner of Fourth and Bay Street, and there's been coyote sightings here. So be careful with your pets, your dogs and your cats. Two coyotes have been frequenting this area about 11 o'clock at night. So just a heads up to people with pets.
Well said. I I've heard the same, heard them at night. It's pretty spooky. But yeah, please be careful out there with your pets.
And to add to that point, because I live up the road from Counselor Downer, and those same coyotes were back a couple of years ago. Randy Fee has added actually a small section on the town website of what to do if you have coyotes. And most of the times it's noises, fencing to prevent them from coming on your property and just kind of try to scare them away, scoot them away with noises, pots and pans, that kind of thing. But the Ministry of Natural Resources has a whole guide. If you want further information, that's on the town website.
But not a 3030, right, Counselor Man?
No.
Okay.
Counselor Downer, I mean, Counselor Gordon.
Maybe an Acme Rocket or something. Always seem to do in the Coyote on TV. I had a quick one, and it kind of relates to what Counselor Maine was saying, the be kind masking. Since, I'll tell you, it was weird Monday. I felt like I was walking around with no pants on. I tried off, I tried with the no masking at work and going to get coffee in the morning. And I really felt strange after two years. I did notice there were some people wearing masks around me. And I would say when I went grocery shopping yesterday at Superstore, I'd say it was 75% of the people in there were masked up. And that included even of of the staff, some staff were choosing to do it. So I think the key here, I mean, this is at its core, I guess, the the whole freedoms that people have been, you know, honking and whatnot about is the freedom to to exercise choice and and decide on your own what's good for you. Even if that doesn't necessarily align with with your neighbor. And I just wanted to say how how nice it was to see that there was no conflict, not that I was looking for any, but there wasn't. Nobody was even raising an eyebrow. Everyone was going about their life and just doing what they want. So that's just in my little experiences in the past few days. And I like to believe that's indicative of the rest of our community. So just echo the be kind masking thing. If somebody's comfortable without a mask, fair enough. If they're not, then, you know, put yours on. I still walk around with one in my pocket out of forced habit now and have done it a couple of times at work because there's some people that come to work with the sniffles or whatever. They don't want to take a day off, but they also don't want to spread whatever it is they have to anyone else. So I think we're entering a new era, a new phase in this. And that's just really my announcement tonight is just endorsing the whole concept of be kind, enjoy the freedoms that we do have. You only have to look on your news feed or the television to see what the real, you know, what what really losing your freedom is all about.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just wanted, I was, we were told today in a meeting by Mr. Campbell that the Coast Guard Icebreaker is coming in the first week of April, thereabouts, to escort Whitefish Bay out to water. And just so that people letting people know they should keep an eye out for that announcement and not caught by surprise. And if you have business to be using the ice to get up to your cottage or whatever, you might be advised to do it sooner than later. But as always, no ice is safe ice. So be careful no matter what. But just so you know, the Icebreaker will be coming in the first week of April.
Thank you, worship. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Maine, then I'll, I see our CEO has something.
Just a quick point, as I was at the Midland Library getting some books with my kids. They have an amazing lineup of activities, but just the other day, they launched the new seed library. So the library is much more than just books. So check out that new program that they launched. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Man. Mr. Dino?
Thank you, Deputy Ross. I neglected to mention one thing during the COVID update, and it is an important element is the the clinic that we have been supporting at the Rec Center. The final two days of that clinic will be Friday, 12 to 5, and on the 31st. So if you want to take advantage of our clinic in order to to get vaccinated, those are the final days for that clinic. But obviously, the health unit will continue to make various clinics available. But our mass clinic will be no longer be operating there. And again, that was the health unit's decision to do that. They have indicated that there may be further boosters that that may be coming available and may be necessary as the year progresses and whether we need the max vaccination facility remains to be seen. But I do want to thank all of our staff who who worked really, really well. And this was, this was put together extremely quickly. You know, the urgent pleas of the health unit. And I want to thank the health unit for the support and cooperation they provide and to allow us to serve not only the residents of Midland, but all of North Simcoe. So my thanks for that.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements? I see none. We'll move on to close this meeting up. Moved by Council McGinn, seconded by Counselor Downer, that the committee of whole rise and report. All those in favor? So Carrie, thank you so much, your worship.
Deputy Mayor. I have here a motion moved by Counselor Post and seconded by Counselor Maine that the recommendations of the committee of the whole for the meeting of March 23, 2022 be adopted as presolutions of council. Comments for comments from the your questions from council. Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. That carries. Next, we have a motion moved by Counselor Gordon. Before I move on, there are no no motions for which notice was given. So next we'll have bylaws. Moved by Counselor Gordon, seconded by Deputy Mayor Ross, that bylaw 2022 dash one nine being bylaw went into a transfer payment agreement with Her Majesty, the Queen, in right of Ontario, as represented by the Minister of Municipal Fairs and Housing for Municipal Modernization Fund, intake three be passed and enacted. Council, you've heard the motion, comments or questions? Seeing none, then all those in favor? Thank you. To carries. Next, I have a motion confirmatory bylaw moved by Counselor Cunningham, seconded by Counselor McGinn. The bylaw 2022 dash 20 being a bylaw to adopt the proceedings of the regular council meeting held March 23, 2022 be passed and enacted. All those in favor? Thank you. That carries as well. And finally, moved by Counselor Shewski, seconded by Counselor Post at this regular meeting of council during 6:42 PM. All those in favor? Thank you. Enjoy your evening. It seems we'll have.
We're going to know what to do.
Exactly.